Attention to the fire regulations behind me if something goes wrong. And we'll move on to the main items of business. So, item number one, committee to confirm, ask the committee to confirm the minutes of meeting held on 7th of August. Are those agreed?
Very agreed.
Amy, have we, have any apologies?
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies from councillor Fowles.
Declarations of interest? Amy?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor David Ellis has declared a pecuniary interest in items B6 and B7 and will leave the council chamber while the items are considered. Councillor Steve Coster has declared a non-pecuniary interest in item B7 as the applicant is a personal friend. In the interest of public perception, he will leave the council chamber while that item is considered.
On the basis, Steve Coster is not a personal friend of David Ellis, it would seem, at all. Right. Any questions from members of the public?
Thank you, Chairman. None received.
Okay. Any questions from, from members?
Also none received, Chairman.
Any relevant updates to government guidance, which there is, I believe?
Yeah. Just to give you an update, that the planning practice guidance in relation to habitat regulations was updated in, in guidance on the 27th of July 2019. The update is to clarify the effect of recent European case law on the habitats regulations' appropriate assessment procedure. It is important to note that Weverley had already updated its approach in line with recent case law, so the procedures already match those in the change in guidance and have no impact on the applications that are being forced this evening. The briefing. Oh, and that, and that members will be updated and briefed on changes to the habitat regulations in the near future, I understand.
Site inspections, sorry, in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Tuesday 15th of October at a time to be agreed at the meeting. So we move on to the application. Now, members will have noted that the reports are presented a little bit different, sorry, the written reports are, and the new idea of being a bit briefer. So if you have comments, either positive or negative about the new presentation, please make those clear to the, to the planning officers. And I should also introduce, excuse me, Chris Berry, who is the, the new interim, I'm sorry, chief, interim head of, head of planning, sorry. And he, in common with other planning committees, he will be sitting on the, on the platform here with, with myself and the, and the vice chairman. So the first application is item B1, 11 Park Chase, Godoming, erection of extensions and alterations following demolition of existing, existing extension. Yep, councillor, any?
Laura to present.
I'm sorry, Laura to present, excuse me. Skipping over to the, going through too far. Please go.
Thank you, Chair. The application site is at 11 Park Chase in Godoming, so the erection of extensions and alterations following the demolition of the existing extensions. The slide behind me shows the location plan, with the site outlined in red. As you can see, it's residential in character. Here shows the aerial photograph of the site on the corner plot, surrounded by the other residential dwellings on Park Chase. On the left hand side shows the existing block plan and the proposed block plan in the coloured photograph. This is the front elevation of the dwelling and the rear elevation of the dwelling as existing. This photograph on the left shows 10 Park Chase and on the right, 12 Park Chase. These show the existing elevations of the dwelling. As you can see, at the moment, there's an existing single-storey conservatory which is proposed to be demolished. These are the proposed extensions, which are two-storey rear extension with, as you can see, which would extend less in depth than the previous, previously refused application with no rear balcony and a revised roof plan. These are the existing floor plans, which are shown upside down to ensure that they're easily comparable to the proposed floor plans. The determining issues are the impact on residential amenity and the design and impact on visual amenity. The application is recommended for approval as set out in the officer's report. There was one written update, which adds the sill informative, so permission be granted subject to conditions 1 to 8, formative 1 to 3, and the additional informative above. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Hagan.
Oops, I've put my thing on. And I've been to the site to see it from the road and from the neighbouring gardens and have met both of the neighbours. And the site has clear potential to be transformed into a well-designed dwelling for modern living. And it does make me sad to see it in its present neglected state, but I am not clear that the current application does comply with the SDBDPD for residential extensions. I've also got some thoughts on conditions, but I presume I should leave those till the end and see whether the intention is to grant permission or not. The front elevations are definitely an improvement, but with regard to the rear elevations, the SPD states that a two-storey extension should not normally exceed four metres in depth and be subordinate to the main dwelling. This application adds 4.3 metres at ground level, but considerably more along the roof line. If you look at the side-on elevation that's in the bottom left there, we've got a very unrelieved mass, which along the new roof ridge extends to six metres. And I have considerable sympathy with the feeling from the residents of number 10, which are alongside that, that it continues to be overbearing and not in accordance with SPD 911. The other part of that requirement is that the extension be subordinate to the main dwelling. And I didn't find a precise definition of that, but my understanding is that this proposal will add over 75% to the floor area of the dwelling internally. And that doesn't strike me as subordinate, that strikes me as opposing, approaching doubling of the size. And the other aspect I wanted to comment on is the residential amenity. I think all the councillors here will have received a letter from the residents of number 10, which includes a photo, which shows that that side elevation extends alongside and beyond their existing conservatory. And at the rear corners, I think the gap between the two dwellings will be 12 metres, which sounds a lot, but, and I'm new to this, but my reading of it is that there is a provision not only to look at a 45-degree assessment of the impact on light and sunlight, but also 25-degree test for the vertical impact. And I couldn't see any reference in the officer's report to the 25-degree criteria having been considered. So I'm curious as to how that plays.
Do officers want to take some of the points that were raised by councillor Hagan? I think there's an issue about, about angle, is that right?
Sorry, the 25-degree horizontal angle. Not vertical, sorry, not horizontal.
I think that particular, sorry, I think that particular assessment is only in relation to if a window was, was there evident overlooking. I mean, in relation to daylight and sunlight, if you pull up a plan, Laura. Yeah, that one's fine. I mean, the, I mean, there won't be any direct daylight and sunlight impacts in terms of the orientation of the sun. I mean, as you know, it goes, that's the trajectory in the south. So actually, the vast majority of the overshadowing will be across the applicant's garden and not that of the, of the adjoining neighbours. So from that perspective, there, there won't be any undue impacts from that rear extension. In terms, in terms of the overlooking as well, there isn't, those windows on the first floor on that side elevation, I think there's one, there's one that relates, on the first floor, there's one relates to a bathroom.
I mean, I wasn't questioning overlooking, I was questioning the impact of the light and whether that particular rule had been considered. I do have a photograph here that the residents of number 10 have provided, which show that the entire length, and you can see it on the proposed block plan, extends beyond their conservatory. Well, a conservatory has to be construed as a window. And so the shadow from the sun in the morning is going to deny sunlight and create overshadowing.
Okay. I think, I think we've, the officer commented on that. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. This application has been brought to the committee at my request. This is the third planning application on this site within the last 18 months. The first two were rightly refused. I'm recommending that we refuse this one as well. I think we have here one of those time-honoured practices of seeing what you can get away with, with this application. First of all, you put in a totally outrageous proposal to see whether you might get away with it. Secondly, you put in an improved one, but still outrageous proposal, to see whether the planners might be inclined to approve. And then finally, you get to the third application where you hope you're just testing the limits of where planning officers might be prepared, hmm, to just about back the thing. And I think that's the stage we've got to at the moment. Our planning officers have recommended a grant of permission. I think the applicant has a little further to go and that we should refuse. You see the planning history on page 15 of the agenda papers. The first application submitted earlier last year was for two very substantial houses after the demolition of the existing house, pretty outrageous and rightly got nowhere. The second application submitted earlier this year was for a single dwelling. That was refused permission for the following reasons: by reason of the excessive depth, scale, mass and bulk, it would be an overbearing development that would be harmful to the residential amenities of neighbouring occupiers to the east and to the west. And it also said in the second reason for refusal that the proposed extensions, by reason of the excessive depth, scale, mass and bulk, would result in unacceptable impacts to visual amenity and the local townscape. Now, what we've got is this third application now, which is a bit like the second with modifications, and the officer's report goes through some of the changes, essentially a reduction in the, in the extension by a metre and taking the ridge height down by 0.4 of a metre over two gables and taking away the rear balcony and the removal of the crown pitch roof and the replacement by three gable ends. The officers recommend that this is enough to then trigger a recommendation to grant. I would submit, Mr. Chairman, that it's a matter of judgment. My judgment is that the changes are not sufficient and that the reasons stated for refusal for the second application are still valid for this application. And therefore, we should reject on the same grounds, and especially on the loss of visual amenity and local townscape. The residents either side are very concerned and indeed upset. The depth of the extension, as councillor Hagan mentions, is proposed for going further than that which is recommended by our own SPD. I think the extension to the rear is large and is at full two stories and I think is still overbearing. It's too large. The impact on the amenity to the neighbours continues to be very great, especially the loss of light, as we've heard from number 10, Park Chase. The residents at number 10 would like to have spoken to this meeting, but our rules don't permit it because we haven't had sufficient numbers of objections. But they have sent us an email and outlined their arguments and, and I, I agree with them. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll be voting against the recommendation and I would urge fellow members to also vote against the application. Thank you.
Councillor Coster?
Yes, one point of concern for, for me on this was the, the issue of the 45-degree rule, how officers stated it has been complied with and those who object in stated they did not believe that to be the case. The problem I have, as a new member of this committee, is I don't actually know what the 45-degree rule is. So I wonder if somebody could just very simply, in layman's terms, because I think actually, for me at least, this is pretty central to, to the case being made for and against this application. I'd like to fully understand it before I decide which way to vote.
Can one of the officers volunteer to, to do that?
So the 45-degree rule was outlined on page 13 of the residential extensions SPD, if you have it to hand. For a two-storey extension, the measurement should be taken from the closest edge of the closest window serving a habitable room. A line should be drawn at 45 degrees to the existing property and extended to a maximum of 12 metres. If the proposed extension crosses this line, then this is likely there to be an unacceptable impact on neighbouring, on the neighbouring property. It has been demonstrated by the proposed block plan that the extension, these lines run for 12 metres and it would not cross, and therefore the 45-degree rule has been applied and met, and therefore there would be no impact on the proposed extensions to the neighbouring properties. Thank you, Chairman.
Before we come back to councillor Martin, anybody else who wants to speak? Councillor Baker?
Unaccustomed as I am. I'll get better. I, I think we probably have to concede the 45-degree rule, but I have to say that I've seen that considered in other applications when I was previously on the council, and I do know that it can seem very surprising. And 45-degree rule does seem to be, I think perhaps appear to be a bit unfair to neighbouring properties. It can be quite difficult for me to go along with, with the 45-degree rule at times. However, we do have to take note of the policies, especially when they are so particularly defined. But moving on to the bulk enassing, it's quite clear to me that the extra build on this property would be unablely, to say the least, when viewed certainly from, I think it is number 10, Park Close. Thank you. And I, I also think that the sunlight coming directly from the east in the morning would not reach the conservatory of number 10 because the sun is lower in the morning. And so I think it would cast a shadow on what is already there. I also think that the, the bulk enassing of what is proposed at the rear of the property is just too much. And in seeking to avoid overlooking, the plans have actually produced a very large expanse of, of wall, which is unrelieved. So having looked at that particular aspect and the sunlight, I will, I will not, I'm not, don't feel able to agree to this. And I would just draw your attention to the officer's statements. The officers consider that what is, the reductions from the previous application would not amount to an unacceptable overbearing impact when viewed from 10 Park Close due to the reduction in the proposed bulk and mass of the extensions. Well, that is a matter of judgment. And in my judgment, it hasn't succeeded in reducing the proposed bulk and mass. So if we want reasons to refuse, they're there. Thank you.
Councillor Ellis?
Thank you. Officers, could you just confirm that under permitted development, these, this house could have a two-storey extension projecting back by four metres without planning permission? I know you don't like talking about permitted development, but it is planning law. I know the eaves, the eaves would have to be dropped to, to have a contin, the same eaves line, but as long as the, the ridges are no higher?
We'll clarify that. You certainly can come back by that on the ground floor, but on the, on the second floor rear extension, I have a feeling it's something like three metres, but we'll, we'll double-check the regulations. Barry's going to double-check them for it. I think it's, it's important to look at this slide in terms of, to give a sense of the nature of the plot and whether or not, I mean, really, when, when assessing whether development is appropriate or not, one has to look at the size and orientation of the plot to understand if the proposed development is going to sit comfortably within that and if it is at odds with the built, the, the sort of pattern of the built development in the area. Now, if you look at the aerial photograph that's up on, on the side, you will see that this is probably one of the larger plots on this particular street and that, you know, the series and the pattern of development is certainly substantial housing within it. So I think it would be slightly difficult from a planning perspective to, to look at that in anything other than the way that the officers have in terms of that pattern of, of development. And there is, there isn't an issue in terms of the impact on residential amenity, there's no issue in relation to overlooking. It complies with the 45-degree assessment in terms of daylight and sunlight. It's, I mean, you say that it is an over-dominant feature for, for that residence, it certainly is an over-dominant feature in, in terms of the view from, from the street. So, I mean, those are the tests that the planning officers have had to look at, and from my perspective, I'm satisfied that they have been met.
I'd like to also point out, the dwelling is positioned on a corner plot, and if you go to page 21, it sets out the separation distance, as the dwelling is orientated on the corner. The separation distance from the front two corner elevations from 10 Park Chase is five metres, but at the rear, it's 12 metres. And the same again for 12 Park Chase, 5.5 metres, and then extending to 16 metres. If you look in the residential SPD guidance, it actually only states a one-metre separation distance for two-storey extensions. So I'd just like to make members aware. Thank you.
Councillor Payne-Rivers?
Thank you, Chair. So just for the avoidance of all my doubt, this does not break the 45-degree rule, therefore there's no loss of visual amenity. And I cannot see what effect that has on the townscape whatsoever. So those two reasons to object, I would not be able to support. Thank you.
Any other member wishing to speak? Oh, sorry, yes, back to you, councillor Martin, sorry.
Thank you. It, it's very unclear to me, the, with the 45-degree angle, I have to say, I'm, I see where a line was, but I have to tell you, it's very, very unclear to me. When I visited the site and I have seen the, with my own eyes, the, where the end of the proposed building will be, it's quite clear to me that the loss of morning light would be profound. So I, you know, we had an application a few months ago, which was turned down. This is just a little less big than the one that was refused before. And I do, I think it does come down to a judgment as to whether this has gone far enough from the application that was refused earlier this year to where we are today. My judgment is that it doesn't. It's a judgment call. The planners have come to one judgment, I, I come to another. And I would continue to press for a refusal of this application.
Councillor Hagan?
I mean, I didn't feel I got a full answer to my question about the 25-degree rule. And the SPD does say that both rules need to be satisfied.
Sorry, councillor Hagan, I thought, I thought I had answered that. The 25, the 45-degree rule relates to daylight. The 25-degree rule that I believe you're referring to refers to habitable rooms and windows and overlooking, rather than directly daylight. So there aren't any habitable rooms overlooking the property, so the 25-degree angle doesn't apply, that I'm aware of. And also, just to clarify, that permitted development extends to three metres from second, on second, on the first floor extension.
And this is 4.3 plus?
Yes.
Can I just read from page 15 of the SPD document? The 25-degree rule should be used when a proposed development directly faces an existing habitable window in the neighbour's property. And to me, a conservatory has to be an existing habitable window in the neighbour's property.
The minimum separation is from the, but where development is, isn't to a taller building, it's a slope, it's an increase of vertical daylight is to be achieved on the proposed ground floor. But overlooking, what, am I just confusing it? The rear elevation, the rear elevation, the neighbours probably should be not less than 25 metres measured, was that?
Yeah, it's to do with the height of the building in relation to neighbouring windows. But my understanding is that that would be when you've got a side window to a habitable room, whereas a conservatory, obviously you haven't just got the side element of glass, you've also got it at the rear, so you wouldn't apply it in that case?
You're trying to say that the conservatory is ignored for the purposes of this?
No, I think, I think what we're saying is that the rule would apply if there was only a small side window, which is the primary window to that, that particular room. With the conservatory, obviously the conservatory that is, that is part of this particular building is a semicircular, so it has windows on the eastern side, the southern side and the western side. So in terms of the daylight enjoyed by, by that room, that amenity, is highly unlikely to be impacted by, by a minimum amount on that one particular elevation, particularly considering it's a southern, south-facing elevation.
Yeah, just trying to bring this to conclusion. So councillor Martin?
But you would agree, I think, would you not, that there was certainly a, a substantial loss of sunlight?
No, no, I don't. I think this is where people, again, they want to apply their judgement, so we've heard the opinion from, from the officers. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this one? Okay, which case will come?
Can I just say that if...
You've had a lot on this.
No, I know, but the, the officers in their report make mention of proposing a condition, if it were to be approved, of obscuring windows on the side of the house facing number 10. I don't see that as a condition in the conditions that are proposed. Is it worth adding those conditions? You make mention of it on page 21, on the third paragraph and the last paragraph, and I would have thought that you may wish to add that as a condition.
So if we add that as a condition about obscure glazing on the windows to the, to the, to the western side of that crap? So the, the recommendation we have, the revised recommendation as on the change paper is that permission be granted subject to conditions 1 to 8 and informative 1 to 3 in the agenda report, and additional informative for above to do with sill plus the point raised about obscure glazing. That's the recommendation. Was all those in favour of that, please? No, we've, we've moved past that. Moving to the recommendation. All those in favour of the recommendation? All those against?
Six, Chairman, sorry. Five, Chairman.
Okay. Any...
I'm expecting two of those.
Upstandions?
Sorry, can we, can we do the count again, please? Sorry, I think I...
All right. All those in favour, please show.
Sorry, that was seven.
There's against?
Five.
Any upstandions?
So it should be one still. Was it?
Okay, let's try and get this right, please.
Sorry, just for clarity, could I just get everybody in favour?
Sorry, just for clarity, could I just get everybody in favour? Sorry about this. Eight, yes, my mistake. It was eight and five.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, next item, item B2, 35 Lavender Cottage, Quarter Mile Road.
Thank you, Chair. This application is at 35 Lavender Cottage, Quarter Mile Road in Godoming. It's for the erection of extensions and alterations to elevations, including the conversion of the existing garage to provide additional habitable accommodation. The slide behind me shows the location plan with the application site outlined in red. Here's an aerial photograph showing the application site to the north of Quarter Mile Road. The proposed development is a two-storey side extension, shown by the block plan on the slide behind me. This slide shows the photographs of the front of the site as viewed on the left-hand side, the rear elevation on the top right-hand side, and the two neighbouring dwellings on the bottom left and right. The existing elevations are shown here with the garage on the front elevation on the right and the rear and the side elevations as existing. The proposed elevations are shown here with the two-storey side extension, demonstrated, as you can see, on the right-hand side. These are the existing floor plans. These are the proposed floor plans. The application is recommended for approval as set out in the officer's report. The determining issues are the impact on residential amenity and design and impact on visual amenity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Right, any comments from members? Castle Payne-Rivers?
No objection.
Okay, which case, no one else wishes to speak? So, sorry. Sorry, the corner of my eye. Yes, right, yes. Okay, so a recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 3 and informative 1, permission be granted. Could those in favour, please show? Any against? Time is up? No.
I think that was unanimous, Chairman.
Okay, item B3, 14 and Manor Milford, alterations.
I think this one has been withdrawn, Chairman.
Oh, really? Okay, I'm sorry, this is late news to me. This one has been withdrawn. Item B4, 47 Chapel Lane, Milford, proposed erection of extensions and alterations.
Thank you, Chairman. This application is for a minor extension to the residential property at 47 Chapel Lane in Milford. This shows the location plan. 47 Chapel Lane is one of a pair of semi-detached dwellings. Shows the aerial photograph with the site shown with a red arrow. These site photographs show the current site. The application is for a very minor extension to this area just here. These are the existing elevations, the existing utility room in this part of the dwelling here. So access by the door at the rear, shown on the right-hand side. The proposed elevations, so there's an extension to this utility area, shown by this section here and here. The proposal extends 1.2 metres past the existing rear elevation of the house with a monopitch roof up until this point. And as you can see, a dual-pitch roof following that. For comparison, here's the existing and the proposed ground-floor plans. So you can see a very minor infill at the back of the property here, just to include a separate access and squaring off the existing situation. The massive consideration are that of impact on visual amenity and on residential amenity and are set out in the officer's report. Recommendation is for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, Max. Okay, any wish to speak on this one? Catherine Wilson.
Looking at the plans, I think actually I would support that because it seems that they are quite a narrow site and they're trying to make the best of it. So I would reckon I would support it.
Castle Sadler.
Just a point, the overview plan with a red mark on. I have a real problem seeing red. And I can't see where that red line is. I know more or less where it should be. Is it possible to do it in a different colour, a yellow or something like that? I have a problem with reds and greens, which is quite common. It's just a comment I thought I ought to let you know.
Yeah, sorry, thank you, Chairman. Yes, in response, sorry, yes, certainly going forward, we can address that and make sure we use different colours for those indicators. If I show you the mouse, is that any easier? Can you see? So that's the location of the house here. So this is a pair of semi-detached dwellings here. And then on the previous plan, it's shown, so that's the same dwellings there. Thank you.
Recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 2 and informative 1, permission be granted. All those in favour, can you please show?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, item B5, 42 The Horseshoe, Godoming, erection of a single-storey extension.
Thank you, Chair. This application is at 42 The Horseshoe in Godoming, through the erection of a single-storey extension. The application site is shown in the red line, but if you can see the mouse going around this dwelling here. This is an aerial photograph of the site. This is the block plan of the proposed single-storey extension, which is shown to the rear. These are two photographs of the site. On the left-hand side, you can see the rear elevation with the existing patio. And on the right-hand side, the existing hedging on the boundary. It shows the existing elevations to the rear and to the side. These are the proposed elevations where the single-storey extension would be. The existing floor plans demonstrating the patio to the rear and where the single-storey extension would extend beyond that with a raised decking area. The determining issues are the impact on residential amenity, design and visual amenity. As set out in the officer's report, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any members who wish to speak on this one? It seems not. In that case, we'll move to the recommendation, which is that subject to conditions 1 to 4 and informative 1, permission be granted. All those in favour, please show.
I think that's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Right, item B6, Hazel Lodge, Hookley Lane, Elstead.
Thank you, Chair. This application is for a single-storey rear extension following the demolition of an existing conservatory to the rear of Hazel Lodge. The site is located within Elstead. As you can see from the site here, it's quite well concealed amongst a set of trees. The nearest neighbouring dwelling is to the south of the property with existing dwellings on Hookley Lane to the west. The proposed extension here is shown in hatched. Where the hatch line is, there is an existing conservatory to the north-west part of the rear elevation, which will be demolished and covered where the hatched area is. You can see here the existing conservatory and the conservatory shown in plan here. This shows that it will be replaced with a dual-pitched roof to cover the rear elevation by folding doors implemented. It will create a flushed rear elevation from the existing projecting rear part and continue across to where the existing conservatory would be or is. Some pictures of the site, principal elevation, rear elevation here showing the conservatory and this area to be infilled from the existing rear projection across. The determining issues are visual amenity and residential amenity. And it should be noted, this application has been brought before committee as the member of committee is the agent.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from members on this one? No? Okay, in that case, we move to the recommendation. Subject to conditions 1 to 2 and informative 1, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I declare an interest in item 7.8? I've just realised that I do know the applicant. I didn't recognise the particular name at first. I will withdraw from the chair.
Okay, so this is the erection of a two-storey extension to form one new dwelling following demolition of existing extension. Lara? Oh, it's you. Sorry, it says Lara down here.
Thank you, Chair. This is for the erection of a two-storey extension to form a new residential dwelling at 86 Fuse Lane in Farncombe. Site is located within a developed area of Godoming and would form a new dwelling within the existing residential castle age of 86 Fuse Lane. This site is located here, as directed by the arrow, and the existing side garage and outbuilding would be removed and the two-storey extension implemented to the north-east of the existing terrace to form a new end-of-terrace property. Parking would be provided both for the existing property and the proposed property in front, which is conducive to the existing situation. As you can see here, this is the existing elevation, showing the existing side extension and garage area. This is the proposed elevation, so to create a new end of terrace, the existing ridge line would be carried across and a hipped end to end the existing terrace. A new front door is proposed with a new porch to the existing property. Floor plan here. Some site photos. The existing outbuilding to be demolished is here and the new dwelling would come into this part here. And determining issues relate to visual amenity and residential amenity.
Are there any questions, members, on this one? Castle again.
Just looking at the first-floor floor plan on the proposed new dwelling, the bedrooms seem terribly cramped. Is there any criteria that should be considered in relation to that?
Yeah, so they should meet the internal space standards and we're just looking to see if that's approved. We don't have it with it.
Well, doing that, Castle Payne-Rivers?
Thank you very much. Just given that there are three car parking spaces at least, only they're numbered three, five and four, because one and two go with the original one, and it would look as if these three bedrooms are actually going to possibly be bedsits. So if they are rather small, is that a consideration?
Can you?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, to answer your question, so we have to judge the application that's before us and that's for an independent dwelling. So we can't judge that to be bedsits. And I don't have the plans before me, but we don't actually have an adopted space standards policy, so we wouldn't be able to enforce if they were substandard. So unfortunately, in this instance, we can't.
Castle Rivers?
May I follow that up, that it's a condition that it is one dwelling? Is that possible?
Yeah, the application would have a condition that is in accordance with the plan, so that would prevent it from being a bedsit or bedsits. I think it would be unreasonable for us to consider adding an additional condition requiring that the property isn't used as a bedsit if it's not before us in that capacity. They would have to apply for additional permissions in the future, so.
For information, is that generally the case, that if an owner wishes to convert to a number of bedsits, they have to get permission for that?
It's quite clear, Chairman, that the application is for one dwelling and that's how we must assess it on that basis. If they wanted to make bedsits or flats or whatever, studios even, that would require a separate, an extra, a separate planning application.
Are there any... Have officers, are they still thinking down there?
Sorry, Chair, we've got the space down, so we're just checking to see what the proposed floor area is.
Is it a two, it's two bedrooms, isn't it? I mean, the standard for a three-bedroom, two-story dwelling is 97 square metres. Does it say what that is? To quickly run that over the plan. I've got no plans. Sorry, we don't get plans printed anymore, so we should have... It's a note to self to make sure that we have that within reports in the future. But even if it's substandard, because these are nationally described guidance, the council's adopted policy is not a reason for refusal in itself. At this moment in time, I'm sure as a part of future review, that may change. But, I mean, from just an observational view, I mean, I would have thought it meets the standard in terms of, you know, whether or not they're double rooms or single rooms. But I'm sorry not to be able to clarify that for you.
Castle Rivers?
The print on our paper copies and the print up there, I can't see the words, but it would be normal in looking at a drawing of an upstairs property. You would show all rooms that are bedrooms with beds in. And what I can't see are what the rooms either side down, the room on the front right with the bed that goes that way, what that room might be. It says something in there, but what does it say?
I think it's bedroom three. It's probably a single bed, but...
Just might make a comment, Chairman. The bedrooms are small. There's no doubt about that. It's a single dwelling with three bedrooms and two of them are medium-sized and one is small. So you make the judgement on the basis of whether you think that's adequate.
Are there any other questions or points from members? Okay, in that case, we'll move to the recommendation. Subject to conditions 1 to 14 and informative 1 to 5, permission be granted. All those in favour? All those in favour? We will count.
It's nine, Chairman.
Those against?
None, Chairman.
Upsets?
One, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, that was the last item. There are no more items to consider in exempt session, so that includes evening's meetings, apart from Patrick embarrassing Laura again, by...
Just to say that this is Laura's last committee, and I'm sure on behalf of members we'd like to thank her for her hard work and endeavours and her clear presentations in the past. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome. Thank you, members.